To put things in perspective, but before I do so, I really want to take the opportunity to welcome to Beconic Bay Medical Center, President and CEO of Northwell Health, formerly North Shore LIJ, Mike Dowling. I think many of you know Mike and I go back a long time. We started almost at the same time at North Shore LIJ at the time, and I came here 15 years ago. For those of you who weren't able to participate in the formal ceremony earlier, I'll read a little bit of what I said, and most of this is a chance for you and Michael to interact, Michael to talk a little bit about what's going to be happening here, and let's open it up like we always do to the questions, ask the questions, the hard questions, the concerns, let's address anything that anybody wants to do like we always do in these town meetings. So, good morning on this very special day, and let me begin by welcoming the hospital staff, and I think we have some volunteers still here, and some of our colleagues from Northwell Health. Today marks an era in healthcare, a new era in healthcare for Central and Eastern Suffolk County. I wish I could be the one who created that new era, but that was from the media, and it really has stuck. An era that will transform the largest healthcare system and hospital on the East End, Beconic Bay, into a truly regional medical center, the vision we've always had, prepared to take care of the healthcare needs of, and this is the numbers, folks, 200,000 people who live in the communities that we serve. You all know that our service area is absolutely gigantic, it's huge. An era that will bring innovation, research, education, compassion, advanced specialized services to all the people from Montauk to the Mauritius, from Orient to Shoreham, and the communities all in between. An era that will be built on a vision that all the residents of the East End, young and old, poor and rich, will have life-saving medical care here, here where they live for the first time. This new era derives from a long history of community, mission, and vision. It is a direct result of an incredibly dedicated staff, and you all truly are, and I am so proud to work with you. Amazingly supportive volunteers, very generous donors, a strong and dedicated hospital and foundation board, together, all of you have transformed what was a small community hospital, and not a very healthy one as we may remember back, into a large, highly respected, robust PBMC health that it is today, and in fact, it is the shining star of the East End. Today, we become even greater as we become an integral member of the Northwell Health system. So, ladies and gentlemen, there is one very special person present today that has been a leadership role model for me and for all that PBMC Health has accomplished. He's an individual who places definitive action ahead of defensive reaction, transformation ahead of status quo, and truly unbridled effort and commitment ahead of complacency and stagnation. He has built one of the largest and most highly regarded healthcare systems in the country, a system that PBMC is now honored and privileged to join. Ladies and gentlemen, all the staff of the hospital, our union delegates and business leaders who are all present, let me turn the microphone over to my friend and colleague, Mike Dowling.
If I don't use the microphone, can you hear me? Sure? In the back? Use the microphone. That's my assistant, she's the only one who can hear. I usually don't stand behind a podium, that's why. But that's okay. First of all, it's great to be here, I want to thank you for... You can walk. Okay. All right. Can you help us with the new system? Can this get better? Are we good? Can you hear me? Mike, use the mic. All right. So, when Andy mentioned, can you hear me now? Okay. So, when Andy mentioned that we go way back, Andy was at Forest Hills Hospital when, back in the 1959, '96 period, when Forest Hills Hospital became part of, back then, North Shore Health System. Because back for the first six or seven years of the health system, we were known as North Shore Health System. And North Shore started the system in 1991. And for, until 1997, it was North Shore. I'm giving a little bit of history because a lot of people don't know, but since now you're part of it, you should have this little bit of background. And by 1996, we had about 10 hospitals. And I'd been involved in pretty much all of them. Andy was with a number of them back then, starting out with Forest Hills. And Forest Hills, along with Sayacid, were owned by HIP, the insurance company. So, we bought the hospitals from insurance company. And then we did a big merger that everybody's familiar with, with Long Island Jewish. And that was a merger that nobody thought would ever happen because these two hospitals didn't like one another. And they actually, I remember when I came to North Shore, I was told that I'd better never be seen on the grounds of LIJ. There was a lot of animosity. But we spent two years in that discussion, and in 1997, North Shore joined, well, LIJ joined the North Shore Health System. But because of the tension between both, the only way you could do the deal was to put the two names together. Now, a lot of people think that the health system began when the, when North Shore and LIJ merged, but remember, it had begun years before. So, after 1997 and the merger between North Shore and LIJ, we became North Shore LIJ. We became North Shore Long Island Jewish, and then I shortened it to LIJ. And we've had that name up until this past December. But since then, we have dramatically expanded. Long Island Jewish gave the impression we were only in Long Island, when Long Island Jewish itself is not in Long Island. It's actually in the city of New York. So, the name became awkward, especially as you're out, you know, expanding in Westchester and Staten Island and Queens and Manhattan, and now in New Jersey. The name became awkward, and it was long, so some people would refer to us as North Shore, some people would refer to us as LIJ. And some of you may have heard me say this, I've often been introduced nationally as the head of the North Shore LIGH Health System. Because, you know, when you go outside this area, people don't know what the heck LIJ stands for, right? So, they say LIGH, and then they say, "What the hell is LIGH?" So, we've been working, and I've been working on a name change for a good seven or eight years. Very difficult to do, by the way. It's the hardest thing to do, because you're dealing with a lot of tradition, you're dealing with people's opinions, and then you've got to find a new name. And we ended up, we went through 600 names. And it went, as I said, it went on for years. It stalled, and we stopped it, and then we came back and we did it again. And then we came down, when I brought on a new person about nine months ago, I said, "We've got two months to do this thing." Come up with three names. And we had an outside company that came up with Northwell. It's a made-up name. And, you know, every time you come up with a new name, people say, "Well, why the hell did you pick that name?" Right? Why didn't you pick something else? And there are many names out there, but most names that you would think about have already been taken by others. You know, you've got to trademark it, you get approval to use it, you've got to make sure nobody sues you after you use it, okay? And Northwell is a made-up name, and it keeps north from the old, and the well part of it is, of course, the emphasized, an increasing focus on wellness and prevention. As you go forward, down over the next five years, 10 years, 15 years, wellness and prevention will be a much bigger part of what we do. Ambulatory outpatient care will be a bigger part of what we do. It's not just only about hospitals anymore, it's about hospitals and part of a larger cadre of other services. So, we launched in January 1st, I'm sure some of you saw the new ad, with the baby, was one of the babies born after midnight on New Year's Day. And so far, the launch has been going very, very well. This is the only hospital, by the way, the only facility with all the signs up. All right? So, I drove in, and I'm thinking, "Oh, that's nice." It actually, it actually looks, it looks great, by the way. And we wanted you to be very happy. Yeah. And each of the, each of the facilities, each of the hospitals retains their original names, like North Shore stays North Shore, Beconic Bay stays Beconic Bay, LIJ stays LIJ, but they're all inside the one company which is Northwell. Now, that's important to understand, that's why I'm emphasizing this, because some people think, "Why would you change LIJ to Northwell?" We're not changing LIJ to Northwell, LIJ is inside Northwell. And so, Northwell is the umbrella organization name. And the fact that all of the name tanks are going to be changed over time, et cetera, et cetera, so, but it doesn't de-emphasize the importance of the local name. So, that's just a little bit about the name. And it's a new beginning for us, it will take about two years for us to be able to change all the signage. You just imagine the signage we've got. Just imagine the number of vehicles. It's not just hospitals, remember, we have 21 hospitals now. We've got 400 to 450 ambulatory locations. We've got all of the other multiplicity of companies we've got. We've got the medical school, we've got the nursing school, we've got the insurance company, we've got all of the new companies that we've started. And I'll come back maybe in a little bit and explain that a little bit more. So, it's going to take us about two years before everything will be changed. But it's an important thing for us. We are going to have, by the way, an ad at Super Bowl. We're going to have an ad on the Super Bowl. It's expensive, but I got somebody else to pay for it. So, I sat with somebody, and I was complaining about how expensive it is, "Oh my God, it's so expensive," or "It's terrible." He said, "Oh, we'll have to pay for it," I said, "Find out the idea." He said, "How much is it?" And I told him, and then he said, "Okay." And then I wondered why I didn't give him a bigger number. So, let me get to this relationship that we now have. Now, we're all one, okay? And it is often very usual in a situation like this for employees to be a little bit worried about what's going to happen. So, let me tell you, what's going to happen is that we're going to be expanding. We're going to be growing. We're going to be adding new programs. We're going to be adding programs that you've talked about here for years and years and years. We're going to be adding, expanding the ambulatory network of services, we've already been doing a lot of this, we're going to be doing a lot more. You're going to get a CAT lab. We have already submitted the applications to the state. Now, we didn't wait. We already submitted the applications, that's going through the process. We don't anticipate any major issues with this, at this point, at all. That will be a major benefit to this region. It's not just to the hospital, it's to the region. I mean, you've got to look at everything from, you know, the 200,000 people out here that need the best care, and you've been providing phenomenal care over the years. I remember this hospital when it was not in great shape. I was out here when we did an affiliation with Beconic, with this hospital before it became Beconic Bay, back in, you know, I don't know, 15 years ago now, 20 years ago, we had an affiliation, we were talking about doing something more intense together, and it never worked because there were other hospitals involved, you had Southampton, you had Eastern Long Island, it got very, very complicated. It didn't happen, and then other relationships were created. We knew at the end of the day, I've always known, and I even, I think I told Andy, "At some point, we will be coming together." It's going to happen, even if you have to wait 10 years. And it was 10 years. But remember, 10 years goes by very, very fast. I mean, the older you get, the faster it goes. So, it goes very, very, very quickly. And so, we will be working very intently with all of the people here to build upon all of the great programs that you've developed already, expand them, and provide major services to the community, and be the hub delivery system in this area, and advancing even further than you've already done so. Because you've got, there's a lot of credit to be given to you and the leadership here for what you've done over the last 10 years. It's been dramatic. The facility looks different, the whole community's all changed. I remember when I used to drive out years ago, I mean, there were sand dunes on the north side of the road here, there were none of these stores on the north side, it was totally barren. And just imagine what has happened, the population has increased, this becomes a desirable location. You're ideally situated in the hub here, and remember also, we have Southside Hospital, and we've got Huntington Hospital. So, in many ways, you have a triangle in Suffolk County. And then you've got to fill in ambulatory-wise in-between and do all of the other programs. So, cardiac is going to be an issue, is going to be a program that we're working on, building a new helipad, expanding, you know, building the trauma designation here, expanding ambulatory network of services, and all of that is beginning now. People are already, are already, already working on it, a lot of our chairs were here today, a lot of our clinical leaders. And so, if I were sitting out there at the moment, I would say, "This is a very positive endeavor, it's a very positive thing that's happening." If you have questions about anything, I mean, feel free, you can ask questions now, but feel free, if subsequent to today, to ask questions of Andy or any of us. But it's very, very important to understand that we're all one, and we'll be working together to expand all of the services. I like to win. I like to beat competition. I don't like to take second place to anybody. I don't worry about the competition, my goal is to beat the competition. I do have a competitive streak, okay? But you beat the competition with access, quality, and service. I mean, patient experience, customer experience, as I like to say, is extremely important, you've got some very good stats out here. Quality metrics are the key, especially, it's ever and becomes more transparent over the years. The reimbursement is going to continue to change, we're going to have to be doing a lot more value, you know, value reimbursement. We have an insurance company, that's an asset that can be accessed, obviously. And we have a huge academic programs, we've got recent big research programs, we've got the medical school, we've got a nursing school, we've got major training and education programs all over the place. So, to me, it's a very, very positive thing. So, why don't I stop at this point and see if there's any questions that anybody has? Don't hesitate to ask, okay?
We have a little tradition to get stories. All right, I can't hurt anybody. Paul, you ready?
No.
We called this rumors and reality.
You know, I always have to. I sat on the floor with you, you know. Are you going to be bringing, whoop, are you going to be bringing cardiac doctors out this way? We have doctors that are busy, will they be...
The question, now let me, let me start, the question is just whether we're going to be, be bringing cardiac doctors here, right? Now, the way we always work on this, we look at what's available here, and you build upon the talent that you've got locally. You need to bring extra resources in to build up the whole program, then you look at how you bring in those resources. But it's a collective effort between us. This is not a case of importing people from elsewhere and just saying, you know, "We've got to get rid of the local people, I'm going to bring in new people," that doesn't work. But you bring a CAT lab in, you have to have a, you know, you have to have a certain, you know, quality of metrics you've got to meet, you've got to staff, there are certain attributes of staff that you've got to have, so we've got to meet all of those requirements. If you have them, but since you haven't had a CAT lab, I'm sure that there will be issues to make sure that we meet, because the state watches these things very, very closely, and especially in the first couple of years when you open up a local CAT lab in a hospital, they review the metrics and they review the numbers. And you've got to make sure that you hit all of those. Because remember something, when you open up a program like this, the people who don't want you to open up the program will do everything possible to make it difficult for you to succeed, and any little thing that goes wrong, they're going to complain to the people who oversee you, like the state, for example. So, there will be people who will not be happy about you having a CAT lab, that's their problem, too bad. We're going to make this successful.
And Mike, if I can add, we talked about this on the radio show, so I grew up in Bay Shore, many of you know that, and what Michael and Northwell have done with Southside Hospital, if you haven't been there lately, is nothing short of just incredible, they're doing open heart surgery there. This is a hospital, when I broke my wrist at five years old, my parents weren't sure they wanted to bring me there. So, in terms of resources that Northwell brings to its community hospitals and the excellence, hey, you can stay right in Suffolk County and look at Southside, and it's, you know, it just tells the whole story of what will be happening here.
Now, that hospital is important, and we go back to your question. We started out doing the, we opened up the CAT labs there, this is before we did the open-heart surgery. And what we did was, we brought the local staff together with staff from North Shore, because North Shore had been doing this forever, and we trained together. And we trained together, by the way, at the simulation center in Sayacid. And then we built up the complement of staff, everybody was trained. All the CAT labs and all the health syst, and all the hospitals in that system looked the same. So that if you move from one place to the other, it looks exactly the same, so you're not relearning when you go to a new place. So, with Southside's case, we trained the people, and we built up the program there, we got it, we got approval, we did very, very well, and then we expanded for open-heart. And we did the same thing. We, and the open-heart area, we moved surgeons from North Shore to Southside, and brought in local people from Southside into uniform. Remember, when you're all one, you're all one, so it's the whole thing winning that makes the difference. Southside today does open-heart surgery, high-end trauma, high-end neurosurgery, has a helipad. It is now, you know, becoming one of the premier tertiary campuses in Suffolk County. And then years ago, if you had ever mentioned this, people would have told you, "You were absolutely crazy." I remember when Southside was losing 30 to 40 million dollars a year. I remember when the facility was awful, and no, it was a distressed hospital that, when I was in government, we used to have to float Medicaid checks on a weekend to meet payroll, because Southside was known as a distressed hospital, it was being held up by state subsidy. We got rid of all of it. And that, that is a great example of what can be done when you're part of a much larger system where you've got so many resources. But the resources go both ways, it's not just bringing everything from, you know, substituting everybody here with people from the system, that's not the way you work this, because it just would not succeed, it's not the right way to do it anyway. Okay?
Who's got the ball? Oh, Jesus.
I thought you were going to do the portal on that.
So, my question is kind of a take on that. My background before palliative was internal medicine and cardiology, and actually, my dissertation was in congestive heart failure. So, the fallout from a CAT lab and from, you know, cardiothoracic surgery, and my compliments to the staff, because we met many of your chiefs today, very impressive, very passionate, very energetic compliments to you, sir. But to bring it back to our needs, we have a huge community that are city-ites that come out and spend a lot of time. I think, and Andy's been such an amazing visionary, they now come to us for that New York City quality, compassion, smart care. And we know that you'll just be an addendum and, you know, help us with that. But I think we need to also consider the demographics of our population, a lot of elderly, a lot of congestive heart failure, a lot of COPC, so we really need to focus, I think, a lot in terms of our, and I know pulmonary rehab...
No, Paul, start, right, Paul, your idea, go ahead and tell us what you're working on.
But I have to say, and I think that we really need to look at that, and again, it's that shift of paradigm from in to out.
Well, we know, we know, we are very familiar with the population of here, we've analyzed it in detail, we've analyzed it by zip code. We know exactly where everybody moves, where they go, where they go for end-patient, where they go for tertiary, we have all of that there. It's one of the things we do very, very well. Now, the question is, the way you, this is why I said earlier, you look from the outside end, you say, "Okay, this is the populations you've got, these are the things, these are the comorbidities they've got, these are the potential diseases they've got, these are the issues that they desire." Now, how do you create the response? Now, how do you create the services to meet the need that those people want? And, you know, I began, I think you alluded to this, a CAT lab is just not only a CAT lab, you know, it's not a box with the machinery, it's the whole container of services that you need to put together when you open up a CAT. It changes, by the way, it changes a lot of what you do in the, in the, in the whole hospital when you do this. And who knows, as you move forward? Because what's happening in healthcare is what was once regarded as something that could only be done in a tertiary campus is increasingly moved out into other locations. Things that were only once done in a hospital are now done in ambulatory. Things are now done in a tertiary can be done in a community hospital. I mean, the distinctions, with the exception of a couple of things, it's all the same anymore. I mean, you know, 90% of what's done in a tertiary can be done in a community hospital. And that, and because of the technological advancements, medical technology and IT, those differences are going to continually disappear more and more, you've got to be prepared for it. That also goes...
Did you try to back to me?
Yes.
Notice he caught it.
Second competitive edge.
I don't really need the ball. Mrs. Richardson, Cynthia Richardson, retired college educated, and I live local here, you know, that I'm doing some... I spoke to this down early, first I'd like to compliment the staff, everyone that work here are excellent, and I'm so glad to know that they are staying. My question is, we have spoken about it a number of times, lepidematery, there are so many people here, cancer sufferers, who need this, and Andy and I, and boy, have had many conversations about it. I am a primary lepidematologist, I control it with the weight, the fluid intake, but there's so many people who are in need to help this therapy that have been traveling to Stony Brook, Southampton, St. Charles, and it's asinine for what's unconcerning when we have this great staff here. I think we should train someone and have an area for that services, and I wanted to know the timing, Scott.
Let me just take it for a second, Mike, and then we'll, we'll... So, I don't want to get involved in the past politics, but there were, despite whatever you may have been told, most of you know that there were a whole series of programs and services that we were not allowed to provide because they were protected services of the other EHA hospitals. All of that is now history. So, Paul, since physical therapy is involved... So Paul, since physical therapy is involved in this, if you and Cynthia would get together before the day is out, I will commit to you that we will get the program going. Because for the first time, the shackles are off.
Thank you.
Finally. We couldn't do cardiac, folks, you understand this, we couldn't do cardiac cath. We couldn't do cardiac cath because of the same issues. All the shackles are off and if we don't know how to do it ourselves, Mr. Dowling has the most talented team of clinicians probably in the country, but certainly in New York, that can come teach us. So you got it.
Thank you.
I want to know applause.
How long about the cardiac rehab?
We actually have a occupational therapist, not because recently he became certified in the.
Tell what cardiac we have, will you?
In anticipation of the cardiac cath labs, we're working on implementing a program on outpatient and inpatient basis in our specialty facility to support the need for cardiac treatments, phase one and a.
Mike, what makes this place amazing, and I'm sure you experience it all over the health system, the best ideas don't come from any of us at the top. This is another idea coming from the staff in the physical therapy that they're working on, we're supporting it. But that's how the best stuff happens here. So Paul, thank you to you, you do a great job.
Now, one of the things long-term is, we got on the rehab issue, is, you know, you've got neuro rehab, orthopedic rehab, cardiac rehab. Eventually, you'll figure out a way, and there's differences between them, which I fully understand, where you, rather than duplicating separate rehabs for each, you figure out how to combine a lot of the others. And so that it's much more holistic. And that's something we're looking at across the health system as well. So cardiac rehab is, is, is very, 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 very key. I require physician involvement as well.
Tom Meyer, I'm going to put you on the spot for a second. Sorry, buddy. I got the ball. We've had a very long history together of, Tom is one of, I think everyone knows, Tom is one of the 1199 union delegates. We've had a very long history of working well together. And Northwell has had a very long history of working together with 1199 and NISN as well. But ask some of the questions and concerns you and your colleagues might have.
Obviously, one of them would be people that are here now being cut or another people coming in to take their places.
No, I don't see that happening at all. I've been having, we've been having lots of discussions with 1199 leadership. I spent two hours with George, George Gresham, who heads 1199 last week. I mean, we, we go back, you know, Dennis Rivera and I go back thirty years, thirty-five years, so we know each other very, very well. And always involved in discussions, especially as healthcare dramatically changes and as more of it, and this is something we're really working on, as more of the care that is delivered is increasingly overtime happening on the outside, on the ambulatory side. And then, then we're in discussions about how does the union and the health system work as more and more care goes out? And how do we do it to preserve membership, but also to be able to make the ambulatory side also successful, just like the inpatient has been successful? And that's a challenge for everybody, including the union. And we talk openly and frankly about that. Because there's about thirty to forty percent of care that's delivered inside a typical hospital that can be done outside. And if you don't do it, if you do do it going forward on the inside, you're not going to get paid for it. So the, the one way to kill yourself is to keep doing what you always did in the wrong location and not get paid. And that becomes a big issue with the union discussions that we're having. But every location is different, you know, there's, you know, it's different depending on which facility you're in, but the generic issues are the same. And then we've had very, very frank discussions with union leadership, we're more over that. Because as the world changes, we've all got to change. We've got to change, the union has got to change, we've all got to do things differently so we preserve what we want to preserve. But on your question, that's not an issue. We don't import staff from another place to replace staff that are here. We may, we may together bring in new people to complement what we've got here if we don't have the skill level here as we expand new programs. Okay? The idea, better thing to do is retrain people over here to have the skills to take it on. Sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't work. Everything is situational. But it's, we've had a very collaborative relationship with 1199 and our goal is to continue to, to maintain that.
Mike, we're also nice, and I see Vlad is over behind the pole over here. Equal opportunity, let's make sure any of the concerns that are nice, colleagues have are also addressed.
So we work with NISD as well, obviously, because NISD is in most of our, most of our facilities. You know, we've got, you know, we've got facilities that are all union and we've got facilities that are like half-union, half-not. We've got facilities that have no unions, okay? And we've got some facilities where the nurses are NISD and then another place that 1199 and another place there's no union. Now, you know, you've got to be, you've got to be a good step dancer to figure out how to manage all that complexity, okay? But the goal is, is to make it all work at the end of the day. And that does not mean that we don't have our arguments. But, you know, if you don't argue, there's something wrong, right? As long as you come out at the end of the argument with a solution, then both goes forward together. But the key message for everybody, this is not just the union issue at all, for everybody is the way healthcare is changing and the way we have to change to get ahead of it is everybody's got to be thinking about people's, their talents, their experience, all having to expand and evolve as the world expands and evolves. The hospitals that get themselves in big trouble is when everybody sits around and says, I don't want to change. Or I, as an individual, don't want to change. Can you imagine being in any business, in any part of the delivery network at the moment and acting the very same that you acted ten years ago? You're not going to be successful. It's everybody's responsibility to keep upgrading your competence and your level of expertise and your skill level. And we have enormous facilities to allow that to happen. We have lots of educational programs all over the place. But the world is so different and, and New York, by the way, New York is not one of the more innovative places in healthcare. We try to be very innovative. I mean, nationally, we are seen as the place that is at the cutting edge. But I'm very familiar with all of the big health systems around the country. I've worked with them all the time, I chaired the national organization, they're all involved. So we spend time with Kaiser, with Inter Mountain, with Providence, with Presbyterian in New Mexico, with Scott and White in Texas. I mean, amazingly innovative stuff going on all over the place. And that's how you learn. You get people out, I have a group of people out on the West Coast today, dealing with other players on the West Coast to see how they're dealing with it. So you've got to be constantly, and I know you do this, but we've got to be doing this a lot more. Nothing is stagnant and in no, in no position is going to be exactly the same five years from now as it is today. The skills changes. You've got to be constantly moving.
Same thing is true in my marriage, Mary won't let me watch hockey games anymore. You've got to change. How about over here, questions, concerns, comments, suggestions? Never seen everybody this quiet.
Yeah, me, Tara's got a question.
There. Yes, Tara, go.
I know, we talked about this before, and he's interested to hear what your vision or what your ideas are about bringing some mental health support to this hospital, which obviously we are so excited about integrated health, about person-centered care, but there's really a lacking of resources specifically in psychiatry in this area.
She's referring to me specifically.
Well, the question is about the mental health and the gaps in mental health. Now, I got to tell you, this is not unique to here. If you were to ask me on the clinical areas, which is the area that worries me the most and is one of the biggest challenges, is community-based mental health. I mean, we have psychiatric hospitals. I mean, if Andy needs to be institutionalized, we got to bet.
Staff is now very happy.
Corner windows, padded on one side. But the, the issue is, there is an unbelievable lack of community-based mental health services across the whole region. You're not unique on this at all. We spend a lot of time talking about this. And it's good because, and it's, it's not, it's also the addiction services. You know, it's, I mean, we're having a real problem on the addiction side. Now, we've built a new psychiatric hospital. We've built a new ambulatory site on the L I J campus. We took over South Oaks. And that's all fine, but we, we are, we are spending a lot of time rethinking about what kind of new staffing models do we need in the community? How do we need to train more social workers, psychiatric social workers, physicians? How do you incorporate mental health into the family practices? Because as any physician will tell you increasingly, you know, you take, you take, you know, twenty medicine patients and you're going to have, you know, a third of them at least having some combination problems. And we can deal with one side very, very well and we can't deal with the other. We're having also lots of discussions with the state on this. This is a huge issue. And we're going to have collectively to come up with a new way of training new talents to take care of those people in the community. So this is not unique to this location. We are not far from here, let's forget the location, but we're working with another company, a proprietary company, that will be building a mental health addiction services entity.
Calverton Health.
Calverton, where we will, so, because a lot of people that have serious problems, addiction problems, that leave New York and go to Florida or Pennsylvania or, or Massachusetts for care, because we have none of these facilities, oh, that's a disgrace. So we've got to create some of these. And so we're working with other companies to figure out how to do that. So I don't have an answer, other than I fully recognize the problem and it is system-wide, probably our biggest issue. But I can tell you this, you talk to any of the major systems around the country, they all have the same problem. It becomes the, the topic of discussion at a lot of the national meetings that I attend, is community-based mental health and addiction services. And the question is how we retrain our current people, how we provide the new skills. We also, over time, I think we'll have to create new, and new care models, right, and, and new types of jobs. You know, rather than fitting the old jobs that we were all trained into, into the current environment, we got to look at the current environment and create new categories of importance. And, and we have the facilities to do that now with the nursing school, the medical school and our internal training center. Long-winded way to say, this is something we have to work together on. Okay?
So another hand before, where's the ball?
There was somebody on that chair.
Tara, Director Social Security, Tara is my favorite. You know, the other side, geriatric programs, she helped.
Yeah, we have, we can, we'll have our geriatric leadership sit with you to look at how we deal with the whole geriatric medicine area. Because remember, you know, if you look at that area, I mean, it's combination, but the typical tertiary hospital of the future is going to be primarily in intensive care sector. Tertiary hospitals will just be intensive care, because everything else can be done elsewhere. So when you look at any of these issues anymore, whether it's mental health or geriatric, it's not what goes on in a facility, it's what goes on across the continuum. It's the whole, the ambulatory, the long-term care, the acute, et cetera. It's looking at it, this is why we had our chairs here this morning from the system. We had seven, eight of them here. And they all walk along service lines like this. So like our chief of medicine oversees medicine on the inside across all of our hospitals, but also ambulatory and home. So we're trying to get away from, from a system point of view, you'll have local chairs, but from looking at the continuum, we're trying to get away from just only a chair only looking at what goes on inside the walls of ours, as you've got to cut across this way. And nobody in the world, and nobody in the country has done this well, we're probably the best. And ours still lacks a lot, but we're further ahead than most. But it's a whole different way of thinking about the world of delivery. Other places like Cleveland Clinic will talk about having a lot of these services, but they really don't. I mean, we have a relationship with the Cleveland Clinic. I mean, we have a relationship with Calolinski in Sweden, which is one of the major research places. We have a relationship with places in Florida. We, we have Boca Raton in Florida, which, that's because a lot of obdorsals go there. So we got to track them. They have a little GPS. And, and we're working on a number of other peer relationships right now. So, so the health system is going to continue to expand. And in this region, the goal has to be, you've got to be it. I mean, you are the premier place now. But you've got to, we got to continue to expand and grow and anticipate what others are going to do and get there before they do it. Anything else?
I have two, two questions, you can answer either one of them. Will you be opening wellness centers and are there centralized departments in the system, say like HR, billing, like everybody does it the same way?
Yeah, we, what we have, where the system is organized is, and we've done this over the many, many years, right? And let me preface this, the question wise is there are central support services like HR and billing, et cetera, for the health system. There is no such answer, there's one right answer for this, okay? Because no matter what you create, if you stay being un-innovative, you'll keep modifying it as you go along. But in answer, we have one central HR for the health system, right? We got one central purchasing and procurement, one central finance, one central legal, okay? Now, and on and on and on. We have our own GPO, we're our own group purchasing organization, our own real estate, our own center of transportation, which all of the ambulances, as you see, including the helicopter, is all run from one location. Because what you don't want is every location running the ambulances, they're going to crash into each other in the, in the LIE, because it's just chaos, you can't do it that way. Now, that doesn't mean, when, when I say centralized, you centralize that which can be centralized to make sense, but you keep local what makes sense to keep local and varies a little by location. So it's not like we come in and say, on HR, everything beginning next Monday is now going to be done system-wise, that's not the way you do it all. So what will happen is, our HR people will sit with the HR people here and with Andy and decide what can we be, how, how can we actually enhance the service we provide and what should be done where to gain maximum efficiency? There are things you will want us to do, there are things we'll want you to do, and it works like that. And this takes months and months.
Let me give a perfect example of that by couldn't wait. The February first, because EHA is no longer, we're able to take part in the Northwell health insurance plan for our non-union employees. The other two hospitals are scrambling to figure out how to do it. So the resources of Northwell, whether it's support services or clinical services, given what Michael has built over the last fifteen, twenty years, are truly immense. And as a full member of the system, we have access to all of that and we'll work collaboratively. You, you all know that radiology is transitioning in February, that work has been remarkable that's gone on, and my kudos to. And my kudos to the IT people and Arti and radiology and all the colleagues from Northwell. Emergency department transitioned over the weekend. It was completely seamless, uh, but there was a tremendous amount of effort behind the scenes that went into that. So all kinds of resources are available to us that we've never had before. And even when we were EHA, it wasn't the scale of what there is.
Now the other thing is that there are other hospitals, because of the constellation of corporate services that we have or system services, which I would put up against anybody in the country with regard to the talent, I have hospitals that are not in our system at all, wanting us on the contract as a business to provide those services to them. I was in London. Three weeks ago, the British Health Service is talking to us about us providing somebody's service for part of the British Health Service. Because they can't figure out how to do it. And actually coming here, it was very interesting. I had a, I had a meeting in Ten Downing Street. I'm an Irishman going into Ten Downing Street. Oh, you know, you got it. So we have a lot of talent here. Uh, and the idea is as how to maximize the use of that talent and that competence to make everything better for everybody. But this, this is our overall matter of, sometimes nothing changes at all. Sometimes, uh, we can bring some stuff that we can, that can help and can make like purchasing. You do it now with us.
Uh, greater New York a little bit, but we, we are starting already to transition to Northwell.
Yeah, so we have our own GPO, our own purchasing entity. So when we sit down with Medtronic, we sit down as a big system across the, for Medtronic, for Stens, right? Um, I, you know, I can go through greater New York at premier, I have reduced dramatically what I do with them because I can do it better myself, I can get a better price myself. We have, we're building in, here in Suffolk County, we're building a, um, distribution center. We have a huge central supply distribution center where we have all the supplies. It's like, ever seen the thing on television like Amazon with the big warehouse with all the, we have one of those. We want to know, so for emergency supplies, there's one section of it, we can, if that is a crisis or a disaster, we can, we have enough supplies there to take care of the needs of any hospital in our health system for at least a month.
Andy's going to deliver them with a drone, sure.
So lots of services, but all of these things, we sit to talk and we figure out how to, to make best use of it all the time.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm going to make you a promise if you make me a promise. I know Mike Dowling, he'll come back and talk to us anytime and it would be wonderful to have him back. On one condition, you go out and talk to all of your colleagues and everyone in the community, you are our community, and tell the message that you've heard today. This is a new era, this is a new world and the East End is going to be so much better off. Give Mike a round of applause.
And if you don't do it well, we'll put something else in the bottom.
Have a great afternoon, everyone. Thanks, Larry.